Good evening, everyone. Mr. Colavita, would you please take the role?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Present.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lindthorfs.
Here.
Ms. Long.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Ms. O'Reilly.
Here.
Mr. Sewicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
Do we do have a quorum?
Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 6, 2021. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 20, uh, Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the district website www.hvrsd.org. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will request a motion that the Board approve the minutes from the following meetings, our regular minutes, from the October 11 meeting, please.
So, a moment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Neal, would you like to provide a report for the Board, please?
Uh, yeah, for the student council, our main priority for the month, but also specifically this week, is that we are holding our blood drive this week, and that is going to be partnered with Miller Keystone. And this is going to be happening in Ewing, starting on Wednesday, and will be lasting all the way to Friday, and just to reaffirm that, that this will be happening this week, and we will be working with the Unified Club. And there will also be opportunity for students to gain, uh, community service hours, but yet again, parents and faculty members are allowed to join. And Mrs. Lee, one of our counselors at our school, has emailed, uh, the student body as well as parents, more information about this, but you could visit Miller Keystone website to gain informa- information. And for, to incentivize people to come, we are holding a raffle with Miller Keystone, and it's a $50 gift card if you use a group code, and the group code identifies with the Ho- Hopewell Valley Central High School. And then the other main priority is our winter pep rally that's coming up, and we're prioritizing this because it's going to be very different than the one that we previously had, especially with COVID guidelines, because we're, we have to have inside due to just the, the weather, because it's going to be happening right before Christmas break, and we don't have a sense and plan, but as of right now, we're working to split up the grades within our school, and we're planning on having our seniors in our gym, and then the underclassmen to be spread across the whole school, because we hold importance for our students to, you know, have fun during these activities, and that, for them to be involved i- in these pep rallies, but yet again, following COVID guidelines is, are the most important thing, and we want to set a good example for the rest of the faculty, as well as the student body, that we're maintaining these, especially during the winter when its transmission rates are very unpredictable, when students are going to be inside for the prior, most of the time. And the last thing for our student council specifically is that we're ho- we're potentially holding a dress code forum, which may happen next month, and we spoke to Ms. Riley about this, and because our, the student council officers have received, um, some complaints from some of the female students at our school, and we will be holding a forum to talk about that and just discuss if, discuss with some of the students and teachers, uh, if any changes need to be made, and especially for next month, we'll have more information about that. And then finally, we just have some school-related activities coming up, uh, very soon before our Thanksgiving break. I know tomorrow night, the boys soccer team will be holding the state championship semifinal game, which will be hosted at Hopewell Valley, and we encourage that all students, faculty members, and parents show out, just to show support, and also, the fall play will be coming up, uh, next week as well, and that's it.
Thank you very much for that thorough report. Does anyone have any questions for Sam? Any Board members? Now, just to clarify, Sam, I do think that those tickets for the game have to be bought, purchased ahead of time, is that correct?
Yeah, an email was sent out earlier today, but yeah, they won't be, you're, you're not allowed to buy tickets, you know, at the game, you have to buy it online, but, uh, an email was sent out, and there's pretty clear instructions how to order the tickets.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I am not going to be giving a formal report this evening, and so I will move on to Dr. Therese and her report.
I'm actually going to hold my report, you want me to go, we're going to, uh, transition, if I can invite Principal Riley to the podium. We wanted to share some, um, and celebrate some special students tonight.
Thank you very much. I'm excited, excited to acknowledge several of our students who have been recognized by the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Program. Although these students are being honored tonight for their academic achievements, and there's no doubt in my mind that they are among the best and brightest at Hopewell Valley, it's important to note that they are not only scholars. Among this group, we have talented varsity athletes, outstanding musicians, an award-winning composer, a district eco-warrior, and students who give back to their community through organizations such as the Virtual Tutoring Network, the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen, and the Watershed. They are truly a remarkable group. There are a lot of them, so I'm going to recognize them in three groups. First, we have several students who have been recognized by the College Board as Recognition Program Scholars. These students have performed in the top 10% of the PSAT of, in the state, they have earned a GPA of 3.5 or higher, and they have received a three or above on two or more AP exams. First, the College Board National Indigenous People Recognition Program Scholar, Baron The College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars, Tiago Dipala Assisus Bombo, and Armon Singh. We also have two College Board National African American Recognition Program Scholars, The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT, a test which serves as an initial screen of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year. Of the 1.6 million entrants, roughly, roughly 50,000 students with the highest PSAT selection index scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. About 34,000 of those 50,000 receive letters of commendation in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Commended students are named on the basis of a nationally-applied selection index score that varies from year to year. So 34,000 out of 1.6 million, and we have 15 of them right here in this room. So I'm going to bring them up as a group, and, uh, they can all just stand around here, all right, guys? Okay. Annika Alt, Baron Brothers, Olivia Kim, Sahith Kusupudi, Tyler Longo, Jerry Nestle, Ryan Rhodes, Serena Russell, Christopher Sewicki, Shritik Sikhar, Jonas Simone, Then, about 16,000 students, or about one-third of the 50,000, and a tiny, tiny percentage of that 1.6 million, are notified that they've qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically-talented young people from all parts of the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. They are the highest-scoring entrants in each state, and this year, we have five National Merit semifinalists here at HVCHS. We have Mia Alice, Ray Riordan, I am incredibly proud to have all of these students representing not only the high school, but also the district, and I'm sure you all are too. Ms. Lindthorfs and Dr. Therese, with your permission, could we take a few pictures in the hallway?
Absolutely.
Could you join us?
Could, could I first say, congratulations to all of you for your success. We are very proud of you, and you are to be commended for your efforts, not only in this way, but as Ms. Riley mentioned, also in, in all the ways that you contribute to your, your school and to your community, so we thank you and we congratulate you.
Ms. Riley, Principal Riley, let's bring them all out at once in one group to show them on camera.
Come on up, everybody. All the way up. Keep going.
Come here, so parents can shake a picture.
Oh, there you go. Just walk.
Which camera?
Slide over.
So if you can just excuse us just for a quick second, would you see to go take a picture, we'll be right back, we'll continue with the meeting.
You have to go take a picture.
That is amazing. That's amazing. Yes.
You want more water?
In the corner.
I thought they were putting.
I'm sorry, I meant, thank you. God, gee.
Pulling springs. Where's the current light? I have to try to change it up.
Hi, stranger. I told Deb we're gonna, um, she asked me to start a, um, text message chain tomorrow so we can make a plan.
Who said that?
Because we keep telling what we're going to, and time is ticking.
Bloody, bloody in the corner, I'm shaking.
Yes, yes, but let's get, try to get something on the calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah. I opened it slow. I wasn't, I wasn't like, gonna die of thirst if I took my time. I think it was just Deb's, mine was mine.
I think it's me. Trying to, just say I got two meetings left, let's have a little drama.
Oh, my gosh, don't say that.
Thank you.
I'm not ready for the group to choose.
Do you know the reason I have this?
Yeah. I mean, you have a.
Yeah.
What do you need? What? What do you, hm, what do you hm for?
This is more than, we see this place.
Where there's original, uh, edition. Right, I actually marked someone there, so if anyone wants to make a call, they'll think of where those are. You know what's good too? Uh, for future meetings.
By the way, I would check it out.
The R-I-D-S-E-N, it's like hard chocolate. Oh, yes. Yeah. If you're going eclectic. Yeah, that is.
This one?
Yeah, that's it.
What's in it? Oh, caramel inside, chocolate on the outside, caramel on the inside. Mmm.
I thank you so much for your patience. We're going to reconvene.
You need a paper towel, some?
No.
I know we have quite a bit on our agenda this evening, and I, um, want to move quickly through my report so that we can get through some of the other presentations we have this, uh, evening. I will be brief, um, I just want to echo President Lindthorfs' comments about our scholars. Um, I'm just so impressed with all of your children, um, and it, and it didn't surprise me at all when we had such a large number of students recognized this year. They continue to do great work, and not just, um, on, on these tests and academically, but many of the students that we're missing tonight are heavily involved in other things, whether it's community service, sports, um, other clubs, other activities. Um, we just have a great group of, of young people here in, in Hopewell, and I'm very proud of them. So thank you for letting us service, uh, serve, um, in your child's education and partnering with us. All right, some quick updates that I have on the agenda for this evening. Um, one, I wanted to give you a quick vaccination, um, update. Um, as you all know, um, the vaccine was approved November 1st for all students that are five to eleven, or children that are five to 11 years old. Um, on November 4th, we ran a Moderna booster clinic for seniors in our community and those other eligible adults, um, at Hopewell Elementary with the help of Montgomery Health Department. Uh, many of the local pediatricians are also running and setting up clinics for, pediatric clinics for the new wave of vaccines that are available to the little ones. So it, um, it is helpful as you go to these, um, clinics with your, uh, private pediatricians that parents share that information with us, it's helpful, it's not mandatory or required, but it's helpful for us to know which kids are fully vaccinated and which ones aren't. When we're contact tracing if there's an exposure, um, we know automatically who we need to quarantine and who, who we don't. It kind of helps us, um, it takes away some of the man-hours it takes of calling every parent to try to identify vaccination status once there's been an exposure, a possible exposure. So, uh, I, I sent out that information, again, I'll resend it this week, um, and we're looking for after your child receives, if you choose to do that for your child, um, have them vaccinated, you're working with your pediatrician, um, please share that information after the second, um, administration and they're fully vaccinated, so that we can keep records here. And that, again, that information is kept with your nurse, your school nurse, and that's just for the purpose of contact tracing, uh, when we're working through the, uh, that with the health department. So elementary vaccinations. Go on to the next slide there. Um, again, these, uh, the COVID vaccine is currently not mandatory, it's not among that battery of vaccines that are required for you to enroll your children in school. So parents will make that ultimate decision on whether or not to participate in vaccinating your child for COVID-19. Um, we strongly encourage that you talk to your pediatrician and work through that, um, with the medical, uh, professionals that have been working and know your child's health, um, best. You go to the next slide. The quarantine recommendations still are in place, however, um, until we get further news from the New Jersey Department of Ed, the local health, health department, the CDC, until those guidelines change, uh, the recommendations that we have in place will remain in place. Um, tonight, we will be, uh, visiting some of the policies that, that the state has required all of us to adopt. In the meantime, will they, will they change? Um, they probably will at some point, but until we have that official change, um, we have to maintain this recommendation for travel quarantine for those who are traveling electively. So again, I meet with the health department weekly with our nurses, with, um, Director Donardo, we are constantly asking the question, and we're constantly sharing information with them, to hopefully get to a point soon that we can make that transition, but for now, um, the, the recommendations do remain in place. Um, just a, just a quick, um, note on SEL, like, social emotional health of our children and our, just overall the community. Um, our kids have been troopers through all of this, they've, they've been, um, following the protocols, they've adjusted, we're working through it, it's not, we know that this is difficult for everyone, and we're just asking that as, as parents, as, as guardians, as members of the community, we can tinner, continue to work together as best as we can to try to mitigate this disease. Um, so, you know, as we, um, participate, not just here in school activities, but outside of school, um, just being very careful that you're doing our best to try to control for exposures that can come in the school, because the trend has still been that the, uh, transmissions are not happening in school, things are happening outside of school, and then people are going to be positive. This is, this is a disease that's not going to leave us anytime soon, and at some point, it will, it will evolve into just another disease that we're managing, but in the meantime, while we have these protocols in place, a positive child or a staff member causes other children to have to quarantine, and we all know that our children do best, and we, it has been proven, because we saw from our climate surveys, from the feedback from you all, from our students, from the need to bring students back early last year, that students do better when they're in school and they have that stable, you know, school experience without the interruption. So we just really don't want to have to keep quarantining kids right now, we're up our 20 kids quarantined right now, from a handful of, of positive cases. So we're really trying to limit that as much as we can, so we ask you, you've been pretty diligent, because our numbers are relatively low, um, compared to some of the districts around us, just asking that you continue to be diligent, so we make sure that we keep our students in school and continue to support each other during this difficult time, and we'll do our best to do the same to support you. Um, toward that end, another requirement that we have is to try to support our local health departments as much as possible, um, with, um, clinics if we can, if we can provide them space. Um, schools have been used for these, um, vaccination clinics in the past, going back to the 50s, um, it's, it happened for polio, it happened for H1N1, and so this is not something that districts don't engage in, it's an expectation. Anytime there's a pandemic or epidemic, um, schools are often leaned on, especially if these vaccines need to be administered to, to school-aged children. Um, so we were re, the, the health department asks us to run a quick clinic for them or provide them the space, um, in conjunction with the, um, state health department and the New Jersey Department of Ed, and they're providing one that I sent out information to all of you for, for November 19th. Um, that clinic is already full, um, we had, uh, over 100 parents sign up for that, um, so we added a second clinic for you, um, at Timberlake Middle School the next day, Saturday. I'll be sending that out to you tomorrow with the forms and the sign-up for that if you're interested. But again, this is not mandatory, it's just another service that we're offering to you for those parents who need access, um, your local pediatrician may be providing that for you, and again, this is a decision and, and something you should discuss with them, and we do encourage you to use your pediatrician if you have that access, um, that's usually a better place to, to have a vaccination experience, but for those who may not have access, we're trying to provide access here. Um, so those clinics will be available to you on those two days. So, um, that's the, that's all I have on the vaccinations for now. Um, after we run the first vaccination clinics, um, they will schedule the, the, um, second administration three weeks out, much like when we ran the adult clinics. So another thing that I wanted to share with you all today is there have been some questions that have come to us, and also the need for us to, to, we wanted to share what we're using the ESAR grant monies for, the American Rescue Plan, or ESAR 2, and, and, um, we have three, ESAR 3. They keep giving us money, but they tell us that there's a very specific way we have to spend it. So we wanted to, we shared the money with you, the numbers, but we wanted to share specifically what the, um, what we're going to spend the money on, um, based on your climate surveys, what you've said your need was, and also the very strict guidelines that the state kind of says, we have to spend the money in these specific, specific buckets, sort of. Um, so the first, 20% or more must be spent on learning loss. Uh, Dr. Plitzus will be sharing, uh, next board meeting, we're waiting for the final scores to come through, um, for the Start Strong assessments, we already got those back for math and language arts, um, and our scores showed some learning loss, more in language arts than math, and more in math than language arts. But she'll share the specific numbers the next meeting, and as a result, we did put money towards, uh, learning coaches and, um, educational supports, and feel free to jump in, Dr. Plitzus, if you want to give more details. Summer learning enrichment, like we've provided last year, as, as well as Saturday guided studies on the weekends and after school and before school. We, we, uh, put money aside to maintain the health, mental health support, we hired a clinician this year, we're putting some of these funds toward keeping that person an additional year, and then beyond the school day I've already talked about, and then the last piece, the difference between the amounts, is that, um, if you want to go to the next slide, um, Mr. Colavita? Is the HVAC systems. So we're going to take care of the one at Stony Brook in particular, uh, that we found some issues when we were doing our, um, needs assessment to, to make sure that our airflow was appropriate for, during our COVID, uh, response, and we found a problem at Hopewell, uh, Stony Brook Elementary, we're going to use a good portion of the funds to handle that, about $500,000 for that. And then, so these are the other items, um, specifically that we're going to be using it for. Benchmark assessments, mental health support, structured literacy support for reading, and then the math support. Okay, so that's all I had for my report. Any questions from the Board?
All right, thank you, Dr. Therese, we appreciate that, and we will move on to our 2022-23 budget discussion, I will pass that off to Mr. Quinn and Mr. Colavita.
Okay, um, so this is a, uh, this is our third, uh, budget presentation, uh, we started off the year with a presentation on our curriculum and instruction department and our special education department. This will be an overview of, um, some current trends in facilities, we're not going to go into, um, depth on like each department that Tom oversees goes through, we'll do a little snippet, but this presentation is going to focus largely on, um, issues that we have in our facilities and how we plan on addressing them over the next few years. Uh, the Board may recall, um, the long-range facility document that's gone around several times in the green notes and in other areas. in the green notes in other areas that have a detailed list of the projects that could be cumbersome if you're looking at it. We tried to synthesize that into a few slides here to kind of share. At my side here is, is Tom Quinn, he's our director of facilities. He's going to be sharing the presentation with me. So quickly, facilities department over, is overseen in the, we have maintenance, custodial and grounds. Maintenance, the maintenance jobs are expenditures that keep the buildings open and comfortable and safe for use in a generalized framework. Custodial services obviously are day-to-day cleaning tasks. It also encompasses our utilities, our insurance, and other custodial type of operations. So one, maintenance keeps the building up to snuff, all the things are working properly. Custodial is the daily upkeep and cleaning. And lastly, grounds is all the stuff that happens on the outside of the building. Tree management, turf management, pesticides, treatments, things like that. So those are just generally the three areas of the facilities budget and what Tom oversees on a daily basis. What we're going to focus on tonight is some of the things that go along maintaining our buildings and what it takes to maintain buildings that some of them are in excess of 50, 60, 70, 80 years old and some are approaching 100 years old and that challenge. So just as an overview, we handle all, if not, most, if not all of our own plumbing, which includes, you know, hundreds of toilets and thousands of sinks, in addition to small water systems. We have wells at two of our schools, pump stations for sewage and things like that. We handle most of that stuff in-house with using and utilize professionals when necessary. We handle the majority of our own HVC work. We have two technicians that handle the hundreds and hundreds of units that we have, all varying sizes and age, from chillers to boilers, geothermal systems. We, we try to do as best we can. We save a lot of money by trying to do it ourselves when we can. We also have an in-house electrician that handles a lot of our, you know, basic electrical, running power from here to there, projector maintenance, outlet replacement, all those types of things we try to handle in-house. Other districts have to hire outside contractors. And as you may expect, it's hard to get a contractor to come out for a single job. Usually have the bundle jobs, and you get five, six, seven jobs at once, then they'll come out and handle it. We have the luxury of, if a light goes out or a balance breaks, our guys can come in and fix those, usually within a few hours. Again, just an overview of what we're doing. So in finance facilities, the last couple of years, we've been talking about projects post-referendum. So in 2015, we did a needs assessment that totaled some $65 million worth of projects. And all sum in total, the board acknowledged that we would identify $35 million of those projects to attack in that referendum in 2016. Most of those projects handled, were focused around life safety and HVAC upgrades. You may recall that this building was, the majority of this building was un-air-conditioned. So these were the areas of focus. We did, we also did, you can see these clocks up on the wall, this is part of a district-wide security system and belt system that synchronized everything to a central location and gave us greater control over the security of our buildings than we ever had before. That was a focus. We also did some, some, I lost it, the ADA access, ADA access to this building. It was hard to access the high school if you had disabilities and this part of that referendum was done to redevelop the front of this high school, not only for security purposes, but also for ADA accessibility. That was the focus of that referendum. What we're going to talk about tonight are the things that are boiling up since that referendum was completed that are starting to need our attention. And our goal is to try to tackle these things on a smaller scale without having to go out and ask for large amounts of money from the community, but to try to do these things in a systematic approach based upon highest priority to lowest priority and then things that in out-years maybe are nice to haves going forward. This was, I'll turn some of this over to Mr. Quinn, but these are the projects that have boiled up to the highest priority that need relatively short-term attention.
Okay. Any of the projects that are marked with an asterisk were previously identified in 2015 when we did that needs assessment. But on this high priority list here, we have the boiler replacements at Timberlane Middle School and Bear Tavern School. Those boilers that are existing date back to 1977 and 1978, so they've well seen their years and worked with them. We found last year that we were having an extreme difficulty during the winter keeping those particular boilers operating. So we plan to attack that starting in the spring as soon as the heating season is over. Bear Tavern, we have a couple, we had a request from the building principal to try and get some space, so we have a couple single-wide trailers there that we're evaluating as to what our best means would be to try and upgrade those and make them usable spaces again. We have HVAC, HVAC upgrades at Bear Tavern in the mods, which are the larger trailer type of things on the side of the building. Again, that, that equipment is 25-plus years old and it just needs to be replaced in order to be able to maintain things. We had an issue with the, this fall up in Hopewell Elementary with an air conditioning system that basically if one component goes down, we lose the entire system of 15 rooms. So we're evaluating the best way to attack that so that if we lose, if a problem develops in one room, it doesn't affect all the other 15 rooms. The Stony Brook HVAC upgrades that were talked about on the previous presentation. Also, a life safety issue at Stony Brook, the fire alarm needs to be replaced. Everybody thinks that building's the new building, but it's actually just about 20 years old at this point and that fire alarm system is aged out. And then the tennis courts at Timberlane have several very, very large cracks running through them, sometimes four inches wide. So it, it becomes something that you can't play on. It's totally unsafe. We've been patching them, but the patches continue to pop out. So we're looking at a complete restoration on that to try and salvage that and keep us flowing the ability to play tennis.
And as we go, as Tom mentioned, as we go through each slide, the items that were identified by the asterisk, the first one here, the boiler replacements at Timberlane, these were items that were on that original list of projects in 2015.
So these are projects.
I'm sorry. Just quickly, so the, that one item for 2015, was it put on hold or was it deemed to be prioritized to now be kind of at the, the front of the line? Can you clarify the process you're using to prioritize this? It's gotten so bad that it's urgent or it was part of the process of prioritizing?
For the ones that were identified in 2015?
Yes.
At that time, they said they, they felt they could wait.
Okay.
But we've gotten to the point now, this is seven years past that, that point, and that equipment that we thought could hold out for a while, well, it's done its holding out essentially.
Got it.
Essentially what happens is when you, when you were designing a referendum, you go through, and we did an exhaustive review of all buildings. We went room by room by room and looked at all facilities and all systems and started to bring things up. There was a great deal of HVAC work done for that referendum. We picked out all the HVAC stuff that was getting closer at its useful life. These came up and would have been included on that referendum, except, you know, the board members were here to tell you there was discussions happening and we discerned that there was a certain limit that we were willing to go to the community and ask for them. So as, once you do that, you establish a number and you start pulling things back off of the projects.
Sure.
And this was one of the things that got pulled off because we felt there was some additional time left.
Yeah, and just one of the other items is, for, you know, for referendum, what you're mainly trying to focus on is those projects which are so expensive but need to be funded at one time that you can't afford to cover them in a year-by-year capital projects budget. So that, that's what we focus on. We did all the roofs, things like that, right? Well, yes, these are, these were priority, but one thing, Bob, I think I recall that may have pushed this to the second tier, might say, is just the fact that the, the amounts for each boiler replacement were manageable from the standpoint of a year-to-year capital budget.
Right. Thank you.
Bob, weren't there also certain projects that were eligible for, I don't know if this is the right way to put it, for a match from the state?
Right. This, this would have been one of those.
Okay.
So what, what Deb is referring to is when you go to referendum, as opposed to doing things on your own, year-to-year, the state matches eligible projects. And this HVAC work is eligible for a full reimbursement of 40% from the state, but you must bond the money to do that. It just, when we, and most of the projects we did were eligible. It's just you get to a limit where you have to make decisions and it, you know, we don't know, if we had gone to 40 million or 50 million or 60 million, it could have failed. The referendum could have failed. We felt that the research that, that Dr. Smith had done at that time felt that, and the board, and, and, I mean, Adam can tell you, we had many, many discussions on how much was going to be in and out and what we felt that the community would tolerate. And we, we dialed in on a number and that's what we went out with. And there was questions as to whether we would do a second question, you know, we put this stuff out in the first question and this stuff out in the second question. In a lot of ways, referendums fail that way because people will say, you know, I'm not willing to do this, they're asking for too much, I'm just going to fail the whole referendum. We felt we had, we had dialed into what we thought the community would, would tolerate at that point in time, and that's what we went with.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to help all of us understand the process that we went through to get to this, to arrive at a point where this is got to happen even though they're, you know, fairly expensive. So thank you for clarifying.
Sure. That's why we're doing this tonight.
Yeah. If, if anything, it does, and this is maybe, I was thinking to ask this question later, but I'll ask it now, or maybe make this one point. Looking at, you know, we taught, we shared the three-year plan with, with the board, the three-year priorities, you know, you have, you know, Tom has generated the data for going out much further than that. So as you're going through that and looking at it from year to year, one thing we'd ask you to come back to us with is if there's ever a point where there's things that potentially be bundled and there's, there's to the district a cost advantage from bundling them, we should at least have the discussion about it.
Sure.
In a, you know, in that type of approach.
Yeah.
Okay. So as we go into out-years, this would be the, not this summer, the summer after that. And again, these are, the majority of these projects were included on that, that long-range plan.
And if you could, if you look at this one, the high school boilers are on this. Again, it's something that we, we felt we could push to 23, 24. Of the 21 boilers that are in the high school, three of them are currently not functioning, but they're, they were installed in 1994. And we have some other HVAC stuff, the 400 wing, it's all original from 1997. We, we're also looking at replacing the turf on the turf field as that's now starting to age out and it, you have to meet certain recommendations with that. So that, that's on, that's on that 23, 24 plan. And then over at Bear Tavern, since we can pretty much assume that we're not going to be replacing the mods anytime soon, our best effort to maintain those buildings is to put some vinyl siding on them and keep them weather tight. I was out there with the architect and engineer the other day and looking at them and we feel that, so the, the T-111 is actually allowing moisture to penetrate and we would be better off if we put some siding on them to allow us to keep them for, you know, 10 more years maybe.
Right. And you, we've mentioned those modulars a couple of times. You may ask, why do we still have modulars at Bear Tavern? They were never meant to be permanent. They were meant, you know, we were meant to address them years ago. There was talk of enclosing in Bear Tavern, but we had a huge population drop-off in that area and they became areas, they used to be full classrooms. There used to be eight full classrooms in those trailers. They're now used for special education classrooms that are, are smaller in size and they, those facilities actually work well for those. But they're, they're, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work on those, they've just, they're not designed for 25, 30 years' worth of use and now they start being to be replaced. And, you know, we try to pick off little pieces of it. We've re-roofed them, we've resided them a few times, and we've had difficulty over the years, heating and cooling them. But it's just something that we continue to maintain and try to keep, keep ahead of as we go forward. Going out, for even further.
So going out to 24, 25, you see the list that's here. And again, all three of these projects were identified in 2015. So at this point, by pushing out to 24, 25, we're going almost 10 full years out from when they were first identified as being something that was going to need.
At one time. But again, we didn't, we didn't feel that increasing the referendum amount any higher than what we did would have made sense. You have that opportunity cost. We'd either do it all now and maintain some, you know, economies of scale or not willing to, to chance that. And at the time, we didn't know. So that's why they were on the original list but able to be pushed out.
And then here, this slide is pushing things out to 25, 26. Again, everything that's on there was originally identified in that 2015 listing. And then this is, this slide are things that we're pushing beyond. We're pushing these beyond, not necessarily giving a year timeframe on it, but again, almost everything on this list is stuff that was identified previously. And then you always have to take into consideration too that new things are going to come up. Different things happen every day and sometimes you look at it and you, and you realize that, well, this is actually going to be a major problem, not just something simple.
And as you could see, just to point out some of these, as we move further out, you could see that the, I guess the, when you talk life safety and you're talking HVAC, some of these things were put on the list as things we'd like to have. Visitor bleachers, it's been something that, you know, we've been pushing for. The bleachers out there, while they look fairly decent, those are rentals and they're reconstructed each year. There was talk about installing a permanent bleacher on that side of the field for, especially for football games when you're, you're separating the crowds. These are not, these are not life safety issues. The, the big one down there, the lighting projects you see down here, the $3 million worth of lighting, this was a big thing back in 2015. It continues to be a big thing, but we, it's the talk of relamping an entire building. And we're, Tom and I are also looking at these through other projects that are other programs that the BPU has and PSENG has where you can get discounts if you redo these relampings through them. Right now, there's nothing really out there right now that benefit to us, but what we had hoped to do with these is to re-ceiling tile everything and relamp everything at one shot, which would reduce energy, but there are also incentives to do it. Right now, they're, they're not valuable for us. It'd be nice to relamp everything with, with, you know, higher efficiency lighting, but it's not likely yet at this point.
And Central High School here was done in the referendum.
There, you know, there's, there's ample ADA accessibility at Tolgate and, and Hopewell, but to complete the ADA accessibility, we thought elevators that would go to each of the floors would be sufficient. It's something that's a nice to have at this point. We are compliant with that. And the last project is a.
There's another slide.
Yeah, this, the last one, the TMS main entrance. If you've seen it, the, the panels, the covers that are over on that, not paying homage to Dr. Smith, that was one of his pet projects and it just keeps getting pushed down the road. Something we'd like to address, but it's, it hasn't made the, the priority list with the other things that are on it.
And again, now here, I mentioned the, the modulars at, at Bear Tavern, so, you know, at some point, the thought process is to remove them and actually build a, a real building in their place. And then some of these other things were just stuff that was on the original document as, as nice to haves kind of thing, you know, new, new transformers, energy efficient transformers would help reduce our electric costs, but they're not desperate.
Again, exterior lighting, similar to what was done here, we all, you know, we're all, I'm very impressed with what was done here with, with the lighting here to brighten up the outside of the building, enhance the safety out there, but it also reduced the cost of what we had before. We'd love to be able to do that at all the other buildings, but it just. We'd love to be able to do that at all the other buildings, but at this point, it's not feasible. Some of these types of things, we may be able to tackle piecemeal. The lockers here, we're going to have to do something to address that going forward, and maybe instead of doing the whole building at the same time, we start to pick off smaller areas going forward. But the two projects that are being pushed out, they total, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10.6 million.
And on exterior lighting, what we generally do is when we get a fixture on the outside that ballast has gone bad in it, we, instead of trying to replace the ballast, we actually put a new LED fixture up. And all the new LED stuff is all night, dark sky compliant, it's all downlit, so it helps to, for the whole facility and the atmosphere and everything too, so.
So just to give, Tom's going to talk a little bit about, just some pictures to show kind of what we're talking about in some of these areas. This is, Tollgate Boiler Room is stuff that's actively working right now, it's kind of been delayed a little bit due to supply chain issues.
Yeah, we, we actually had planned to do quite a bit of work on the back end of the boilers at Tollgate over this past summer, but the supply chain is terrible, and some of the parts that were ordered in April are still not here. So we had to start into the heating season, patching things, and we'll run through this heating season in that form, but as soon as the heating season's over, then we're going to hopefully have all the parts and be able to address the issues that we have there. Next slide. This is just more stuff in Tollgate, and you see the amount of rust that you get, that's because it's a steam boiler system, and that steam is constantly in the air within the boiler room, so you get a lot of corrosion. This is something that we're going to work on probably in the spring, the step, the back steps at Tollgate that go up to the gym, they weren't previously used that much, so it wasn't as big of an issue, but now they are used quite a bit more, and they're really just not compliant with the updated codes and everything, so we're going to try and bring those around and update that.
So again, a project that was not really on our radar, that kind of popped up through, you know, a change in use in that area of using that doorway more than it had been used before.
These are the boilers that we're replacing at Bear Tavern. Believe it or not, they were actually patented in 1911. So we're running on technology from 1911 there.
Oh my God.
And TMS is pretty much the same thing. They're almost identical boilers, they're only, they're just a year apart. And then this is over here at the high school. I just took a picture of the tag on the boiler because these are small bank boilers, but they are, they are starting to fall apart and crack, and we can't use them anymore. So this is why this is, we think we can keep it running for a couple more years, but as we get to that 23, 24, we're going to have to really seriously look at those. This is the crack in the tennis courts that I was discussing. You can see that's more than just a little crack. It's enough to put your foot in, in some places, so if we want to have the children be able to play tennis safely, we need to do something with that.
Fortunately, you may, you may ask, why aren't we just patching them? The area where that's green, in that picture on the right, was patched six months ago, and there's just so much water infiltration underneath that concrete that the patches don't hold. And that's why we, you know, we were recommending a full replacement, redraining, you know, redraining it and all those kinds of things to prevent this from happening going forward.
Yeah, I think, I was going to point out, like, just in terms of why, you know, we've been talking about a full replacement as opposed to reworking, I think, what, the last two years, we've probably talked about four times that you've had these patched, and it just doesn't hold.
We actually had the contractor take a little pity on us and did the second patch job for free, felt bad it cracked so quickly. But when they did further investigation, they said, look, there's, here are the issues here, and it's not going to hold, and, you know, we're going to tell you that upfront, so.
Yeah, this, this spring, they came out and patched again without charging us, because like Bob said, they kind of just took pity on us with it.
So, the last slide here is, how do we pay for all this stuff? Without going to a referendum, which is something we don't really want to do right now. I kind of summarized down here in the lower left-hand corner, a summary of all the slides that you've seen as we, as we move outwards each year. Tom put a little caveat in here that we have over 800,000 square feet of aging buildings, and as you can see by those, simple example of those Tollgate steps, things are always popping up. Sometimes you, when you, just when you think you're ahead of it, and you have everything on the list that you need to address, something else pops up that maybe takes center stage. Tom and I did not plan on having to address tennis courts at this point, but it's something as you saw in the picture, is going to have to be addressed sooner than later. Finance Committee, Facilities Committee asked for a review of both deposits and balances, deposits and withdrawals over the last 10 years to the Capital Reserve. We've tried to put money in each year, save '16 and '17, '17 and '18, which coincident, not coincidentally, mirrors the referendum timeframe. So we tried not to put money aside during that time when we were going out and asking the public for monies. But this is where we would stand, this is, you know, how the beginning balances ended in the different projects that we did each year. The key part right here is for the board, if you remember back in June, the board authorized up to a $3.8 million deposit for the Capital Reserve. If you can see my arrow, I'm circling that right here. That would be that deposit, assuming that deposit was made. The additional $7,500 there is interest that was earned on the money in the past year, which would bring our total as of, on our books as of June 30th, to be $10 million, $10 million 195, carrying it forward to '21, '22. We have done $1.7 million worth of projects this past summer, which included paving at...
Stony Brook and Hope.
Stony Brook and Hopewell Elementary, and also some work at the admin building, the infrastructure windows and other facade work that we did there. This number down here, the 1.523813, is the contribution the board decided during last budget season to put towards the debt. So at the end of this year, assuming we don't lose anything else, we would have an amount of $6.9 million in our Capital Reserve. That would mean no additional deposit if we didn't make another deposit next June. Going into next summer, you'd have that $7 million or change, and if we were to tackle the $4.7 million of projects, our balance at the end of '22, '23 would be somewhere in the area of $2 million. Obviously, we're out a couple of years there, but just trying to give you a general idea of if we were to start, even with that first year of projects, it's going to be a huge hit to our Capital Reserve, and just demonstrating the need that we need to continually attempt to replace the monies that we spent. And it's, it's a battle, trying to balance, you know, the only way to make Capital Reserve deposits is to budget it within your 2% cap, or take monies that become available through unexpended monies, unexpended appropriations at the end of each year. At this point, that's, that takes us to the end, and we're, you know, opening up for questions from the board at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Colavita, Mr. Quinn, we appreciate it. Any questions from board members?
The only question I have around the, especially around the boiler HVAC work, do we have any idea about the, the impact to our heating and cooling bill for delaying them or moving them forward?
The bill? The impact of the older systems on energy?
Oh, those older systems, like the boilers that we want to replace this coming summer, they're about as inefficient as you can possibly get. The firebox is as big as one of these tables, and what we'll replace them with are small condensing boilers that will more than likely cut our energy down by at least a third.
Something that, and I know Adam brought this up many times during the referendum process, is to be able to see what the, we redid this, most of this building with higher, higher efficient energy equipment. But since we've gone fully operational, we've gone through the COVID process, so we haven't actually gotten to see how the efficiency of those boilers and those, that new equipment was during a fully occupied regular school year. But we are noticing that our energy costs have dropped, especially here at the high school and at Bear Tavern, where we did the first full-scale replacement of HVAC equipment back, I don't remember when we did that, '16, '15, '16, before we went to referendum. We had done smart energy systems at Bear Tavern. So we did see that Bear Tavern and this school building were starting to show some savings in energy. Some of it's also the fact that we bid out our commodities, our electric and our natural gas, with this consortium with probably 300 school districts, so that helps us from just purchasing on the open market. But the new equipment will help, for sure.
Yeah, and that, and that, that's, I assume, impacted the decision to wait to 2025 on the HES, the Hopewell Elementary School project?
I mean, a lot of that is just need. Like, where is it, where are we going to fail first?
Gotcha.
What is the most needed? So, going back to Adam's economies of scale, yes, would it be great to go out and bid all those projects at one time? It would, but we can't afford it right now. We don't, we just don't have enough money in the Capital Reserve to do that.
And we've got things failing before we've got, we can worry about efficiency.
Just things that, you know, yeah, he's, you know, he's got this building running down a few boilers, we're able to get by, but, you know, if you lose a few more, you wind up having issues of heating and cooling.
Yeah. Just to point out, like you were mentioning, Bob, with, with the in-room units that we have in the schools now, we are less sensitive to, like, overall boiler utilization and cost than we used to be like 20 years ago, you know, because you have the ability to supplement within each room in terms of the thermodynamic.
And that's actually what helped us limp along, it's a good point, Adam, what's helped us limp along at Bear Tavern with those aging boilers, because those new units provide both heat and, and cooling, so that, you know, you can go longer into the fall without firing up the boilers because the units in the classroom are providing ample heat to get through those chilly mornings as it warms up in the afternoon. You know, we haven't really had to fire up both of those boilers right at the same time until, yeah, we're running one. We don't have to fire both of them to keep those really frigid days like we used to.
Yeah, so you're less sensitive to their inefficiency than you used to be, but, but we'll still get a benefit once they get replaced.
And just real quick, on your point of how you save energy, six years ago, we were using almost 2 million gallons of water a year at Timberland. And now, even when we're not in COVID, we had dropped that down to about a million gallons. And that was by just fixing leaks, fixing faucets, fixing toilets, fixing things that leak. And yes, it's spending money to do that, but we reduced our water usage by almost a full half. And then, just real quickly, to show you how things change in a heartbeat in my side of the world on, in the facilities, we went under the crawl space at the admin building a week ago to fix a drain line. When we went into the crawl space, we could hear water run. We inspected and looked for where the water was coming from. It was coming from a heat, a large heat line that runs up to the ceiling on the first floor. That pipe was so corroded, it was about to burst. So we got very fortunate that we were able to notice that, but we also saved a lot of money because I have very, very good mechanics that were able to take that apart and fix it and stay until it was put back together, so the next day, we had the boiler running, we had the heat on, and everything was working. And if we had it to go on outside, it wouldn't have happened that fast, it wouldn't have been that way, and it would have cost us a lot more money.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Bob. So last year, we were able to make the big deposits, for obvious reasons, just COVID and all, into the Capital Reserve, which gives us the ability, if we wanted to do the 4.7 million, and going forward though, how feasible is that, looking at the future, '23, '24, 4.8, 5.3, we never have made, even if you look here, you don't see the deposits into Capital Reserve that would be, make that something we'll be able to go in the future. Is that where you start cutting stuff that you want to do? Essentially, you'll say, this is more important than that.
Yeah, we're going to, it's, you know, this, I guess the good thing, the good news is with, these things aren't, haven't failed yet. And we do have good people monitoring this stuff, and we continue to monitor them, and as, you know, the money becomes available, we start to pick, pick that stuff off. I mean, it's the only way to do it. And we, you know, I guess my plea is that we continue to make deposits to Capital Reserve each year to try to stave off doing, you know, a big, having to go through a referendum, even a mini referendum of, you know, maybe you do a $10,000 referendum. That's, they talked about, Tom mentioned the '97 referendum, which I think was a $10,000 referendum.
No.
What?
No.
$10 million. $10 million. But they did two back-to-back, they did a '95 and a '97. They called them maintenance referendums, where they needed to fix roofs and things like that. There was nothing glamorous, said we needed money to fix this stuff immediately, and they did it. That's tough to do that back in the day. They didn't, you know, passing two referendums two years apart is something we don't really want to do. We just went out for $38 million. This is stuff that we can try to pick off, you know, year by year.
And if we don't have enough money in any particular year to make the deposit that we need, then we pick out of that list the most important things that we feel are nearest to failure, and try to limp along with the rest of it.
So yeah, I mean, to answer your question, John, even, that's why we, I showed you the list of things from '22, '23, and beyond, we don't have the money to cover all of it.
That's just my concern looking forward, like, obviously, I wish we did, you could just, let's fix everything, but I just want to make sure, you know, we had, for all the bad stuff with COVID last year, it gave us a lot of flexibility with different stuff, but going forward, it's just a little, little scary.
Sorry, Dr. Treese, I thought it was going to go 15 minutes, but we went a little longer. Feel free, anybody who has questions after the meeting during the week, you know, feel free to reach out, Tom and I can, can help answer your questions going forward.
Thank you again, we appreciate it. All right, so we will move on to our public hearing and special opportunity for public comment on the report on violence, vandalism, and substance abuse, and I will pass that to Ms. Smith in a moment. I just want to remind all attendees that mask wearing is a requirement in all school buildings at this time, so we please ask that you wear your masks. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. So this is the time we come to where we present the findings from the 2020, 2021 school year. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. You might remember last February, Lori Rotundo and I presented on Report Period One, which was the first semester, but this is now the full report from last year, and we have Dan DiStefano will be joining us this evening to discuss part of the presentation with me. So you can go to the next slide. So this is the, an example of the violence and vandalism form that we are required to report to the state. Any incidents of violence and vandalism that occur throughout the year, and I'm going to go through that with you in just a moment, are reported here, along with any HIV harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents are also included on this form. On the next slide, you'll see Section B, this is actions taken, and it's broken down into expulsions, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions. So these are statistics for the entire district. You'll notice that we have decreased our out-of-school suspensions, and I discussed this last time we met. This is a trend that we've been doing for a while. We feel it's much more advantageous to have the students in the building for any sort of consequence, where we can have the teachers meet with them, and they serve their suspension in the building for an in-school rather than outside when they might be unsupervised, and then it's kind of a vacation day for them rather than a consequence. In addition, last year was, you know, a different year, and 1920 was a different year based on COVID and the pandemic, so the numbers are a little skewed in those two years. On the next slide, you'll see Section C, which is a count of incidents by location. So on the left-hand side, you'll see each of the different schools, and across the top, you'll see the category of offense. So just a few things to point out, please note that when we have the substances category, this does not include random drug screening results. Those are only students who are found under the influence or in possession, which could be alcohol or drugs. In looking at the HIV columns, you can see that the building in which they occurred, and then we also... and then we also have the number of confirmed, which would be in that fifth column, and then versus the alleged reported. So, these were not confirmed, and that's in the last column. I like to bring this up. We're very happy that the weapons column continues to be zero, so that's something that we're very happy about every year. On the next slide, you'll see our district incidents. So, this is from, starting back in twenty-eighteen to nineteen. Please take into account, as I mentioned, so in the nineteen-twenty school year, we did go remote fully in March, April, May, and June. So, our numbers took a downslide from the year before. And then, last year, we only had about thirty percent of the students who were remote, so that means that we didn't have all of the students. And I would say now, we're, that honeymoon phase of being back in the building is now over, and so we do expect our numbers to be up quite a bit when we meet at the next report in the beginning of the year. So, some things I like to always state, too, when we talk about violence, what we consider violence here in Hopewell is very different than what you would see in other districts. We do take things very, very seriously, especially when it relates to a HIV incident. We only had one incident last year, and that was a student towards a staff member. So, you might remember me talking about that last year. And, something that, you know, started showing its head a little bit in the last few years, while vaping does fall under the tobacco policy, if there's reason to believe, or if we test and find out there are other substances in the vape liquid, such as THC oil, things like that, that would fall into substance abuse category at that point. But that's something that we often bring the police into, and they're involved in those sorts of situations. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dan DiStefano, who's gonna talk about some of the resources and programming that's been going on in the different schools with our counselors and different programs that we have to help with these reports.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Yeah, so I just want to go over some of the measures we've put in place, mainly for the safety and the wellness of our students, two areas that, you know, I've only been here since the summer, but I've been, you know, super impressed and glad to see so much attention being paid in those areas. In addition, to two elementary anti-bullying specialists engaged in further ABS training, our counselors have also spent a great deal of time in recitation and wellness classes, specifically this past spring, to discuss mental health, the effects of the pandemic, quarantine, and virtual learning that they've had on our students. Similarly, we had an outside group called Minding Your Mind present to our seniors at CHS, focusing on dispelling some of the stigma around mental health and having healthy discussions therein. Our freshmen also participated in the Signs of Suicide program this past January, and then a related parent program was held in February. A recording of that program is available on our counseling website, along with all the other parent programs that we host. And further on, in the spring, we have a number of other projects underway. The Hopewell Single Parents Together Support Group works hard to ensure that all parents have a strong support system in our community, and the space to connect with others with similar experiences. On another similar note, Heidi Kami of the Municipal Alliance does an amazing work for the community. She hosted a parenting conference in April, included keynote speakers, workshops, breakout rooms, and such. It's a tremendous resource. Timberlane also has its own parent support group, and our district also maintains a strong relationship with the Therapy Dog Program, Attitudes in Reverse, or AIR. I recently got to join one of our elementary counselors as her dog was meeting her class, and it was, you know, real cool to watch, and, you know, the instant impact that that has on a group of youngsters. And we continue a real strong relationship with Project Campfire, a group that comes in and provides classroom lessons for students K through four on a number of SEL-related topics, safety, conflict resolution, et cetera. That does it for this report. Like Ms. Smith said, I look forward to coming back in a few months, and we can talk about a lot of the stuff that we're doing this current school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and Mr. DiStefano.
Any questions from the board?
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we will open up for our first public comment session of the evening, which is specifically dedicated to the report of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum I'm sorry. Members of the public are invited to address the board on matters of violence and vandalism for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open.
Hello, my name's Warner Graff. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Hopewell Valley. Two girls in the system, former school board member, high school teaching degree. On the mental wellness and all this good work, are you doing any type of assessment on the negative impact of all of this COVID impositions that you're doing on the kids? The kids are very well aware that you're not doing it in their best interest. They're immune to this stuff, and you're putting all the burden on them for social distancing, for masks, they're getting acne, you're cutting off their oxygen, you got the teachers badgering them to pull the mask up over their nose, all right? Enough is enough. I take my girls to go see Notre Dame USC, we've got eighty-five thousand people spitting on each other and cheering, and then we come here, and we're sitting like a bunch of fools at a Biden rally. We've got social distancing and masks on, it's ludicrous. You guys are losing these kids. They have sleepovers at my house, they laugh at you, they talk about you, they think you're crazy. And I can't even defend you, because not only that, I'm a little disgusted, because it's clear you don't have their best interests at heart. They are immune. You shouldn't be doing this to them. So, I'd like to see in the mental wellness, you know, whatever program you're doing, how about a little assessment on what you're doing to these kids? I take the kids down to the shore, they don't have a mask on, they won't even go into the Wawa to go to the bathroom. The psychological impact of this is devastating. You're turning them into serfs, you're turning them into kids that are absolutely paranoid, and it's a disgrace. So, I would like you guys to critically think about what you're doing. There's no reason I should go to a Home Depot and walk around, and then come here and sit with a mask on six feet away from other people. You know how that looks? You look foolish. I feel foolish. Please assess what you're doing to our kids and make an adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graff.
Matt Branham, Hopewell Township. Just to continue this talk on mental wellness, social, emotional learning, all of these nice buzzwords. Hopewell Valley Regional School District policy on quarantine is in violation of our U.S. Constitution, Title VII of the nineteen-sixty-four Civil Rights Act, and our state constitution. Section One, Clause Five of the New Jersey State Constitution, "No person shall be denied the enjoyment of any civil right, nor be discriminated against in the exercise of any civil right, nor be segregated in the public schools because of religious principles, race, color, ancestry, or national origin." How does this board find it appropriate or lawful to endorse a policy that blatantly discriminates against our children and limits our children's access to a public education? How does this board find it appropriate or lawful to punish our children for not being vaccinated, when we, the families who make this choice, are legally granted religious and medical exemptions? It is common knowledge that both the vaccinated and the unvaccinated can contract and transmit COVID equally. In light of this fact, why is the Board of Education choosing to discriminate and segregate our children based on vaccine status? Lawrence School District in Mercer County does not follow this, and requires close contacts regardless of vaccine status to quarantine. We, the parents, do not support policies that discriminate and or segregate our children. We, the parents, are asking for a formal revision of this policy immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. If we have anyone else for public comment, I would again tell you that this really, this session is tied to the Violence and Vandalism Report specifically. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment?
I just need an excuse to take the mask off for a moment. And I second the emotions and the observations of the parents here. I'm, my name is Jim Prozer, I'm a resident of Pennington. And I would submit to the board that it is, in fact, in my estimation, in my opinion, practicing medicine without a license for the board to encourage and hold a vaccine clinic for an experimental and unregulated medication. And you are exposed as far as liability. Why is it that there is no education given to the children of early treatments and prevention of COVID? This early treatment and prevention was demonstrated conclusively when the President of the United States contracted COVID and was cured virtually overnight by early treatment with well-known medications, yet there's no mention of this that I can find in the board or the curriculum of the school. Why are they not informed of the relative risk of vaccination and non-vaccination? The risk of a vaccination, apparently, from what I've read, is fifty times greater than the risk of damage from COVID for a young person. Why is the board not conclusively quantified that fact? There's some things to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crozier. Anybody else for public comment? I said, thank you. Seeing no one else, public comment is now closed. I will request a resolution that the board accept the report on violence, vandalism, and substance abuse as required by the New Jersey Department of Education. Do we have a motion for that, please?
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. As a matter of old business, I would like to mention that with regard to the board's self-evaluation, we had planned to have a representative from the New Jersey School Board Association come in to review the results of that with us in December. We're now looking to push that to January, and again, I will have the results out to all of the board members soon, but we are pushing it back a bit, so don't be concerned that you haven't received those results yet. We will move on to the consent agenda. And I will ask that Mr., I'm sorry, I'd like to request a motion that the board approve the items for consent.
Some, second.
Okay, all in, I'm sorry, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Sawicki, Finance Committee, please.
Okay, let's see, we don't have any, all the items are on consent. We did have a long discussion about, you know, the budget planning process tonight, so I won't take up too much time here. All I'll say is, just, as you saw there, we've had some items bubble up to the front, and at this point, you know, it was more than what we had originally planned for this year, I think, going back, you know, in terms of the boiler work. So, if anything, it was high time the board, as an entirety, got a look at what is on the list and talked about it thoroughly. So, I appreciate Bob and Tom for going through it and sharing with us.
No, it was a great suggestion by the committee to do that. I mean, it's one thing to get a large spreadsheet with a lot of numbers and things on it, other than, but it's another thing to hear us kind of sync, you know, simplify it down so that people could see it. Good exercise.
Any questions for Mr. Sawicki? Okay, and we will say thank you, and move on to Personnel and Ms. Grillo.
Can I request the motion to move my item to, right? Yep.
Motion?
Second. Okay, so, the Personnel Committee met just before this meeting tonight. We had a number of things on our agenda. You'll see we have the Personnel Actions and their extracurricular appointments, which is standard for our agenda. We also have two mid-year retirements from Timberlane that we'd like to acknowledge tonight. So, Jenny Carroll, who's a social studies teacher, she's been with the district since nineteen ninety-two. She is retiring effective end of January. And then we also have Ron Schott, who is a French teacher at Timberlane since two thousand and two, who is retiring at the end of December. We also spoke in our meeting about the presentation that was presented tonight on the HIP report. We talked about the weekly COVID testing. We spoke about negotiations, and then also substitute pay rates, which we will talk further about, and come with a recommendation to the larger board at the next meeting. Mr. Colavita, can I have a roll call vote?
Yep. Mrs. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sawicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Lindhorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Grillo. Education Program Committee, Ms. Long.
We had, everything is on consent, and we had a relatively, for us, shorter meeting this past week. We discussed mostly the Start Strong results that I know Dr. Treese referred to earlier tonight, and Dr. Plitzus is gonna give us a full update. We're still analyzing the results, but she gave us a little update on that, so next month, look to hear more about that. And then we discussed field trips and end-of-the-year trips for fifth grade, eighth grade, senior class, and how to handle those trips safely going forward. And I guess that includes, like, sporting events and competitions as well. So, that was what we discussed.
Thank you. Any questions for Jenny? And we will move along to Community Relations, please, Mr. Mason.
Yes, thank you. We went over a couple things, real quick. First, Amy Rockenstein from Mercer Me reached out to us. She would like to, she was just looking for a way, she was, it was just offering to have Mercer Me kind of get more information out for us from the, for the public. So, we're looking to invite Ms. Rockenstein to come in, thinking January, when the new board takes over, it would be a good time to go over and really touch base and see, see what she's thinking, and see how we can move forward with that. We discussed the field trips. It was also discussed in EdCom. We're going over, we're gonna be getting more information out to everyone, just what we're looking for in having field trips and going over that and communicating that with the public, when we have more information. We've discussed the vaccination, the clinic, the vaccination for the students. I think it's a good thing, there's a, clearly, the fact that we're, clearly, the fact that there's been a hundred people signed up for the first one, and that we opened up a second one, there is a need for it. We also, it's important to know that the school's not mandating it. It's your personal decision if you want to get that vaccination for your student.
That's right.
But we're offering the service to make it easier, which is a good thing for the community, in my opinion. But we're, we're offering the, the service to make it easier, uh, which is a good thing for the community, in my opinion. Also, we briefly spoke about conduct during sporting events. Now that things are opening back up, you can see it statewide, there's been issues at all sorts of sporting events and all that, so we're looking to, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna look into it more. And Dr. Therese is going to talk to some of the other superintendents of other schools and, and kind of get it back out there, what's expected from, not only from the student athletes, but from spectators, so we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna be diving into that a little bit more.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mason? All right, we will move on to Policy. And Mr. Herbert?
Okay, thanks. All right, so we have a few things here tonight. First, can I have a motion, uh, to approve the listed policies for first reading?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have, uh, three policies and a bylaw here, so the first policy is, uh, 1648 dot 13, School Employee Vaccination Requirements. This is a new mandated policy addressing the vaccination and testing requirements, uh, based on Executive Order 253, which was signed by the governor in August, requiring public school district employees to be fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing requirements. The second policy is 1648 dot 14, Safety Plan for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings, COVID-19. Again, another new and mandated policy, uh, developed to put us into compliance with new standards for healthcare settings, which have been deemed to include school nurses' offices. So the standards include information regarding vaccination status, protocols for reopening and maintaining safe schools, PPE, physical distancing, and health screening, among other things. The third policy is 2425, Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Program. This is another new, then mandated policy pertaining to a revised statute that allows schools to take credit for virtual or remote instruction days, but only if the school or schools have been closed for more than three consecutive days and the closure was the result of a specified emergency. And finally, the bylaw is, uh, Board Bylaw 0155, Board Committees. We are recommending a change to this bylaw, adding a new committee, um, which will be the Committee on Social and Emotional Learning. Uh, this committee will oversee the integration of SEL and other character education into all aspects of the educational program. Any questions on the policies that were up for first reading? No?
No.
Okay. So can I have a voice vote to approve these policies for first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Second is policies up for second reading and adoption. They're listed in your agenda and we've discussed them, or I described them at least last month. Any questions or comments on those policies? Okay, can I have a motion to approve these policies for second reading and adoption?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Colavita, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sawicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, thanks. So the third item is, um, a discussion of our homeschool students' participation, so this is something that we've reviewed as a committee in the past, and we wanted to bring it to the full board for discussion. We thought it'd be a good time to revisit this policy and just confirm and clarify the board's position. There are two existing policies that address it somewhat, um, and they're both listed. One is 2430, Co-Curricular Activities. That one says that students must be eligible to participate in co-curricular activities based on board policy, but that doesn't specify what board policy is. And then the second one, 9270, Homeschooling Equivalent Education Outside the Schools, says that when children are homeschooled or not enrolled in a school, the board, uh, the school district is not required to provide any of the entitlements or privileges of students enrolled in the school district unless an entitlement or privilege is specifically provided in board policy. So up until now, we've taken that to mean that unless students are enrolled in school, they're not eligible to participate in co-curricular activities. So, Dr. Therese, I don't know if you want to give some more background and context to that?
So the background, or the context is, um, we, we have followed that line and really have not offered, um, any of our, access to any of our extracurricular sports or activities or clubs, um, to students that are, um, homeschooled, that parents are homeschooling them. And, and in COVID, and with some parents just really not feeling comfortable in sending their kids back to school for, for health reasons, for safety reasons, this has come up, um, more than once, and we thought it was important to bring it back to the board and ask the question rather than just to, you know, continue to just say no, as we have in the past. In light of this, was it time to revisit this? So that's why we're bringing it to you all. We thought it was a larger, larger conversation. Um, I did check, uh, around with the, um, our sister districts, brother districts around us, and, uh, this is generally what most of us do. We don't allow, um, students who are homeschooled to do extracurricular activities in clubs, but then it's our choice, right? This is your decision. And so we thought it was important to bring it to the board as a whole to discuss.
Did anyone have any thoughts that they wanted to share? I know in some of our committees, we have shared some thoughts. Mr. Sawicki?
I just had, had one question, whi- which relates to, like, you know, certainly within, for students who are enrolled in our district, we have certain, we'll, we'll call it standards, right, in terms of academics, you know, prioritizing that over, over participation, if there's any concerns or anything like that. So from that standpoint, you know, in terms of, um, this type of participation, i- i- have there been developed mechanisms for, like, assessing, are there any, you know, academic issues with students who might participate that? You know, how, how do we benchmark that against what we have in terms of our standards?
Um, that would have to be some research that we would have to do, but no, they wouldn't be subject to our eligibility requirements for grades because we don't issue them grades. Right? So there, if you're asking that,
Yeah.
that's, that's an issue. Um, also, if they, they engage in any, um, breaking any school codes, you really, I mean, you can remove them from the team, but you don't have any purview beyond that over that child. It's like you can't suspend them or give them any consequence. They, they're not, you know, they don't go to school here.
Yeah, I've, I've personally been of the opinion, I've, I've known some families over the years who have had, who have homeschooled kids in, uh, not necessarily even in our district, but have sort of lamented the fact that they couldn't take advantage of the school's, um, activities, even though they were taxpaying members of the community. And so, i- in my opinion, I, I feel like if someone lives in the community, even if they decide to homeschool their kid or send them to another district, I, I don't feel like they should be excluded from participating in school activities.
Nice to have a question, so.
Excuse me, excuse me, please do not comment from the floor, thank you. You can, we have, we will have another public comment period that you can speak if you like.
So not just sports, we're talking about, um, clubs too? So then they, they would be able to do any type of after-school club? So how would they hear about these opportunities if they're not on our?
To figure out how to advertise it, I guess, if you decided you want to go down that route.
Just curious. Okay, but I, I think it should be open to students who are homeschooled, definitely.
Do we have any idea of, um, the percentage or number of students from our district that are homeschooled?
I didn't get into it.
Okay.
Like, I can tell you how many have said they're homeschooled in recent, you know, past, that we can't count somebody who never enrolled in a school.
Okay. I, I, I do agree that, I think they should be allowed access. I don't know that we necessarily have to advertise every club at the high school. I mean, it's, it's something that if there's a child who's homeschooled that says, "I'm very interested in the X, Y, or Z club," they, maybe the parent or the student could reach out to the building principal or somebody who asks a question about it, and sports, sports teams, I don't know how much they partake as much as maybe when we were all younger because of so many club sports now, but some other access.
The one question I, I know we were going to look into is the liability issue. Did we get any additional insight there?
There, there are. If they do something, if something happens, I think there may be, we're liable to that, and there, anybody who aren't liable to that.
Yeah, y- yes.
No more so than anyone else participating, right?
Are there cer- in terms of the, the high school, um, the older kids when they were doing sports and things like that, are there, um, you know, does the NJSIA have any, uh, particular rules or, or guidelines for students, whether they're enrolled in our school or not? Like, do they have, um, expectations of, you know, students that I would think we would need to take that into consideration?
And we'd have to do some research on what their expectations are because the one piece that just came up with, um, with Mr. Sawicki is the academic piece and eligibility, right?
Right.
And again, you know, when you're homeschooling, there's some self-reporting that's happening there, right?
Sure.
But we can't, I, I would have to find out, but we'd have to definitely put some guidelines in place around a lot of this, um, if we wanted to go down this road.
Sure.
Any other comments from board members?
I'll just say, I agree with Bill. I think, you know, you have families that are taxpayers in the district. I think their, their kids should be able to, they, they might choose, make a decision as family to, to homeschool them, but I think it's important, and I think it's important for the, the social, emotional aspect of it for the kids, that they're able to, to take part with other kids in the activities and, and I, I think it's definitely something that, that I think we should, you know, go for. Like, I, believe me, I know there's a lot, it's not that simple, like, oh, open it up, let's do it, but I, I think it's something that we definitely need to, to look into, and I, I would be very supportive of opening it up.
Anyone else? Okay, so I guess we will, we will-
I have homework, yeah.
Yes, we will, we will do our homework, we will do a little more research, and then, uh, perhaps we bring this back to the Education Committee for starters, and then back to the full board after that. Yeah. It would need to go through policy, but I believe the discussions were happening in, in-
Yeah, some what guidelines, what does it look like?
Yeah, and, and as Mr. Colavita has just said, we also would, you know, consult with some of the administrators as well, bring them on board for these discussions, particularly from the high school.
And our lawyers to make sure, you know, we're just doing our due diligence on, on our liability and also code of conduct issues, you know, if something comes up.
Absolutely. Okay. Seeing no further comments, we'll thank Mr. Herbert for his report. And we will move on to the review of board calendars, and I will request a motion to approve the November and December calendars.
So moved. Second.
And discussion. Let's start with, uh, Finance.
What time are you thinking?
What time were you thinking?
The seventh is better. The seventh is better.
Oh, seven.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I can do either one.
Seven, we said the seventh, right? Seventh at seven, okay.
Personnel will be right before our next meeting on the 13th, correct? 6:15? All righty. Education Program Committee? Seventh at 9:30 a.m. the Tuesday? Was, was Finance at 5:00 p.m.?
Five.
Oh, I thought you, you said after five, so no?
Oh, I said anytime.
Anytime.
No, that's fine.
Community Relations?
Usually, we should do the Thursday before, so that'd be the, the ninth?
Do we have a-
There's no soccer anymore, so.
Is there a hope while express? No, right? We did November, so we don't have a December.
No, I think the next one's January.
It would be January.
Okay, so we're good then, yep. No, no, we're going to do a meeting. I just didn't know who we needed to do. So, uh, the ninth is what we're saying? At what time?
It's 3:15 mark?
Yes? 3:15. My head is spinning. Okay. Policy?
Um, the seventh or eighth? Is that good?
I'm looking at you. Policy, seventh or eighth, Roseanne?
What time are you thinking of any?
We usually do six, right?
So six would be fine for any of those days?
On the sixth, at six?
That's fine, thank you.
Is that good for you? Sixth at six?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're at five.
Bill, do you want them back to back, five and six, for the Tuesday?
Oh, Policy?
The Policy and the Policy.
Finance and then Policy?
So are you saying change the Policy to the seventh at six? That's fine.
Yeah, whatever you guys think.
Six fifteen? Okay. So, so Tuesday, the seventh at 6:15?
All right, all in favor of approving the calendars for November and December?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any items of new business to bring before the board? Seeing none, we will move to our second public comment period. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during the portion of this meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open.
Hello, Warner Graff, again, 140 Reservoir Road, um, Board. Uh, Bob, good seeing you again. Dr. Therese. A couple things. I'll refrain from talking about masks again, but, uh, a couple other things on my mind while I'm here. First, I, I walked with, um, uh, one of the new board members over in Lawrence, and one of the reasons I did was because he uncovered a few books in the Lawrence Township, uh, curriculum, uh, and school usage, which, um, were, were, uh, were very objectionable, uh, in my opinion, uh, and in fact vulgar. There's basically two categories. One is in the category of CRT, Critical Race Theory. There's a book, uh, called Not My Idea, a book about whiteness. It's in circulation in a lot of districts. And, Mr. Colavito, if you would mind, you know, recording these questions, or I can send them to you, and then you can get to me at another time, but I want to know if this book is in circulation in any way, uh, in the district. Uh, this book is blatantly racist. Um, it's blatantly divisive. There is no redeeming value to it whatsoever, and it needs to be, um, uh, taken out of this district if it's used at all. I would like to see the board publicly disavow Critical Race Theory in all its forms, including SEL. We do not need to infuse our children with a sense of, uh, either less than or more than based on their race, and that's what these things do. Sex, secondly, is the sexualization, um- Secondly, is the sexualization of, of the kids. Again, there's a book that was in the Lawrence school system, it was called The Teacher's Resource, called It's Perfectly Normal. I'd like to know if it's in circulation in any way within this district, either as a resource or in front of the kids. I've seen pictures out of this book, and you couldn't put them on a billboard in public display. It is absolutely disgusting, vulgar. Pictures of masturbation, pictures of, of sexual acts, I have it on my phone, I can show it to you if you're interested, but this book doesn't belong in our school system. I've got 47 seconds left. I have an eighth grader in the school system, all right? She came across the book, George. Dr. Trese was kind enough to hear me out on this a couple, a couple of years ago, actually about a year ago, really, Rosetta, and I appreciated that time, but I don't have a follow-up, and I haven't asked for one, so I'll, I'll say that, but I would like to know if George has been removed from the school system. This is a book about a transgender kid, and its only redeeming value is in its coarseness. It is an advocacy book for the LGBTQ community. It doesn't belong in the school system. It's, it's got the kid trying on red polka dotted underwear and talking about sitting down on the pot to pee for the first time like a girl. It's absolutely coarse. It doesn't belong in there. Meanwhile, my girl's not learning some things like who John Paul Jones is and Ethan Allen is, which she can do.
Okay, thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you very much, guys.
Matt Branham, Hopewell Township. In the fall, the Center for Disease Control received a Freedom of Information Act request from an attorney on behalf of the Informed Consent Action Network for documents, quote, "reflecting any documented case of an individual who, number one, never received a COVID-19 vaccine, number two, was infected with COVID-19 once, recovered, and then later became infected again, and three, transmitted COVID-19 to another person when reinfected." The CDC's response came on November 5th. Their response is that it does not have a single document reflecting that this has ever occurred. Not one instance of an unvaccinated, naturally immune individual transmitting COVID-19 to another individual. Not one. After two years of upheaval and psychological warfare on our children, not one. Let's just, let's just sit with that for a minute. After two years, the CDC has not one instance of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham.
Hi, Christine Rule, Hopewell Township. I just want to echo something that Matt just said and just say, but that's what, that's the answer we keep getting, is we're going by the CDC protocols, but yet we don't have any studies or information on proof of, of how, why this is good for our children. But that's not what I came here to talk about. I wanted to actually talk about the bus situation. My, on, on November 3rd, and two days last week, the 8th and the 10th, my student's bus was almost 30 minutes late, and the first day this happened, I was notified via text 20 minutes after he was supposed to be at the bus stop. So, I'm sitting there worried, what happened to him? Did he not get on the bus? Did the bus have an accident? Did they get, did the bus break down? Like, I don't know what's happening. You know, and come to find out that there's a bus driver shortage that, like, I've heard from maybe other districts, but I, I really wasn't aware of it, and, you know, I just, I just feel like the communication could be a little bit better. You know, we're sitting here not knowing what's happening, and meanwhile, he's having to go from, my son is on the middle school same bus, he has to go back to the middle school and pick up other students, and then drop them off, and then go all the way to the elementary school, so those students are sitting out there just, you know, not knowing what's happening, my son, one of them, at the elementary school. I mean, I feel like there should be some kind of mechanism in place to notify the parents in a timely manner, maybe give us like an hour's notice that, hey, your bus driver's gonna have to do another route, there's, there's things going on. I mean, I know you guys can't control a, a bus driver shortage. And, and also, when the students are required to wait at school, like, my son is just standing outside, the teachers aren't really aware of what's going on, the safety patrol didn't really know what was happening the, the first time it happened. With the weather getting colder, are we gonna move them inside? You know, I, I only live seven minutes away from school, so it's very easy for me to go there and pick him up versus sitting at the bus stop waiting for him. I'm just saying, maybe some communication or maybe a better process would, would really help us and the other students, because the, the middle school students and high school students must be affected by this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rule.
Question occurred to me in the ensuing discussion after we commented.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again for the record?
Yes. My name is Jim Prozer, I'm resident of Pennington.
Thank you.
And a question occurred to me regarding the, the diligence of this board in protecting the children's health of this community. And I would question the board. What is the percent effi- effectiveness of a cloth mask? Anyone? How effective is a cloth mask? Hello, you don't know? Okay. So, I can tell you, it's 10%. Now, this is obviously was not known and so hasn't been weighed against the damage that you are doing to these children. You're therefore liable. In my opinion. Now, after knowing that many parents in this community are distressed with your stewardship of their children's health, do you intend to quantify, qualify, and report to this community the risk of injury you have imposed on the children of this community? Do you have an intention to examine your protocols and report to these parents on improvements or findings that you have done? Or do you intend to maintain your current posture of relying on the CDC, which has been repeatedly proven to be inaccurate in the recommendations and guidance? Do you intend to report to this community on thorough investigation of the protocols against COVID you're imposing on these children? Anyone? So, you have no intention of doing that? Noted. In the 30 seconds left, do you, any one of you, believe that people of color or of various genders are oppressed in America? Do any of you believe that? No one believes that people of color or various genders are oppressed in this country?
Thank you, Mr. Prozer.
Good evening, Allison Yakis, Hopewell Township. In the month of October, a morning announcement was made at Timber Lane Middle, Middle School. I'll share it with you. Are you a member of the LGBTQ plus community? Are you a supporting ally of LGBTQ plus issues? Excuse me. Then consider joining the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. GSA is a student-run organization that offers a safe space and unites LGBTQ plus youth and, and allies to build community and organize around issues impacting such individuals in school and greater, and, and the greater community. We will be meeting once or twice a month during Flex. Your homeroom teacher will be sending out a Google Form link for you to sign up. I emailed the principal to ask her to clarify what the process is to make parents aware if their children have signed up to attend this LGBTQ plus group. My thought was that the matter, my thought was that the matter of one's sexuality should be addressed at home, not just at school. The response I got was lacking. It simply stated that the group is run by three staff advisors to support our students, and that neither of my sons had signed up. That was not my question. My question was, how is TMS informing the parents of their sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that they are exploring their sexuality during school hours with staff advisors and other members of this group so that parents can also support their children at home? How are these three staff advisors qualified to offer this service to our children without the involvement of the parents? I am not sure how many parents are aware of this once or twice a month Gender and Sexuality Alliance meeting, and I'm not sure how many parents are aware that their children have signed up and are attending. When we have to give permission for our children to watch movies that contain certain content of sensitive social issues during school hours, how is it that the major life decision of your child's sexuality is addressed at school without any communication to us, the parents? I do believe that our children need more support than ever with all the facets of life. However, I do believe that we, we must work together and not separately. I believe that as parents, we have the right to know if our child has signed up to attend this group. I do believe in the district informing the parents of life issues that arise that really do need to be worked on at home. Can anyone in this room tell me why this information is not shared with the parents? As a concerned member of this HBRSC community, I would like to know what the process is, or will be in the future, to notify parents of what is going on with their child's sexuality at school. Also, I'd like to just mention that my sixth grader expressed to me that several of his classmates were going to check it out. I look forward to your response this time.
Thank you, Ms. Yakis.
Hello, Board. My name is Kim Johnson, I live in Hopewell Township. I basically have procedural questions because I've never, it's been a long time since I've been to a board meeting, so one of them is that I see on your roll call that there are nine people listed, but I can count 11 people sitting on the side tables. I'm assuming that the four people in the center row are the four people that are listed on the bottom of your roll call, so I'm wondering, who, who on here is the board and who on here is not listed in the list of the roll call on your subject, roll call number two? Okay, you want me to go along with?
Once you've finished your comment, we will, we will answer.
All right. Another procedural question is, why do you not read into the record all of the consent, consent agenda items that you have voted on? I see that they're listed here, and there's, seems to be a little bit of, I, I'm not quite sure, it says that they're asterisked, but there's plenty of places in your agenda where there are asterisks, so there's, there's a little bit of, you know, ambiguity there in, under educational program, you have asterisks, and so I don't think that's part of the consent agenda. So, it seems a little bit confusing, and I don't know how that would, how your consent agenda then would make it into the minutes if it's not read into your record. And then, the other question that I had is not procedural, but there was, I didn't hear any mention during your COVID vaccine clinics that you were offering, what pharmaceutical company's vaccine was going to be offered, and if you were going to be telling that to the parents prior to the clinics being held. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Hi, Nicole Klein, Hopewell Township. I joined the Board of Ed meeting in September when I became aware of the NEA Union trainings for teachers that attempted to teach educators on how to talk to children at school about their COVID vaccination status and further document their private medical information in an app called Reach. I'm not sure if you saw it, but at some point recently that made national news because it was very alarming. While we had some assurance from you, Dr. Trese, that, that app wouldn't be used, and we would encourage staff to not discuss private medical information with our children at school, it is happening, and children are, are being asked by their teachers if they're getting the COVID vaccine, whether their parents have been vaccinated as well. So, while I appreciate, Dr. Trese responded very quickly to me, I think we're gonna run into problems because we don't have a written policy about this, and if we don't have a written, written policy, we might run into some legal troubles with staff that continues to do this, so I would just ask that you address it and put a policy in place.
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
Good evening, Beth Charline, Hopewell Township. I came by tonight to discuss the wearing of masks in the classroom and the science behind it, because I don't think anybody's really thinking about the science, and instead we're just listening to people's recommendations. We've learned a lot in the past two years, almost two years, about COVID. We know that it, the elderly are the most vulnerable, 65 and older, with two or more comorbidities. I just learned that the latest count on deaths of children under 12 is only 276 children in the whole country. So, the well-being of our children and the risk of death from COVID is not significant at all, and yet we're making them wear these masks. To the, the gentleman that spoke earlier about the effectiveness of masks, there's 30 to 40 studies out there, tons of information. I looked through a lot of them, and there's some commonality. We found that the N95 masks are about 95% effective, but to his point, the cloth ones are negligible, and yet look at what everybody's wearing, and what are our children wearing? So, what's the point? If we focus on the vulnerable and have them wear the N95 masks, why should everybody else wear them? Why can't kids go back to being normal? We should think about the cost to our children. They're falling behind in education, they're falling behind in socialization, suicides are up 50%. That's from a CDC study. And, so who are we thinking about? I know that social distancing and hygiene play a big part in helping keep us safe, but let's remember why we're here, why you were elected, and it's for the wellbe- well-being of our children. I, I know somebody who walked his grandchild to school the other day, and she forgot her mask, and he said, "It's okay, we'll just go inside so you're not late." And she started crying, and she said, "I can't go in there, I might kill somebody." So, what are we doing to our kids? And I think we should all think about that. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name? We didn't get your name at the beginning, I'm sorry.
No problem. Beth Charline.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I have just a question that I come up with.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're only allowed one per session, one time per session.
Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township, and I'm reading this on behalf of another.
And I'm reading this on behalf of another community member. She would like to know why, under the second reading and adoption of policies and regulations, the three new items, the mental health and well-being, the Road Forward COVID-19 health and safety, and the new appendices for the Road Forward, why weren't they not read out loud for the record?
Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
You want to start with that? The procedural questions?
Yeah, we're gonna start with those.
So we're gonna start with the procedural questions.
First and foremost, we do have nine board members here around the table. I know you can't tell by the placards necessarily, but the rest are administrators here in district. Board members, raise your hands, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Consent agenda items, do you want to address that one? Mr. Colavita is the secretary of the board as well as our business administrator.
Consent agenda items are items that have been, for the most part, vetted in committee by board members. They're relatively routine items that happen, but have been discussed in detail. They're placed on the agenda so the public knows what is being discussed and they can ask questions about those, but they're put on a consent agenda to expedite time. They've already been discussed, there's no reason to have a, you know, a reading in of bills and things like that. It just moves the meeting along. Same thing with reading policies. They're on the agenda and by having them appear on the agenda and the board voting upon them and being given the opportunity to question them, that's how they're read into the record.
Thank you.
It's actually, it's a standard practice that most, if not all, boards of education in Jersey use.
And Bob, are those policies also available on our website with the numbers?
There are, yes.
Most of them, right? On the agenda, they're all attached to the meeting agenda electronically, yes. And along with those questions, we had a question about what pharmaceutical company was providing. Yes, thank you.
The only vaccine that's approved right now for five to 11-year-olds is Pfizer. So that's the only one that's available to parents. And I am putting that on the correspondence that's going out to parents.
Oh, that vaccination.
It's only Pfizer, that's all they offer for five to 11, that's what's approved. The other question, Mr. Graff brought up George. We did discuss, as I promised you, Mr. Graff, EdCom discussed, Education Program Committee discussed George. We went through the specific passages that you were concerned about. I read those aloud to the board. I gave them time to read it on their own and just said, you know, this book is, it's upsetting to a parent, a parent is challenging the book and he's bringing it to the Ed Committee to look at. That is the way we look at those things. They approve all the books that come through, they examine the passages on their own, and then we discussed it in committee. And I did bring that back to the board. I was director of curriculum instruction at the time, and we brought that discussion back and shared out those findings to the full board. So that's how we shared it out. So we did discuss, as I promised, and anytime any literature or any of our curriculum is challenged, we do bring that to the Education Program Committee and those members who serve on that committee of the board to examine it.
And Mr. Graff had also cited some books that he considered to be objectionable. I guess we'll need to look and see if any of those books are in our libraries or anywhere here, and we will have to report back on that. Yes, if you wouldn't mind including those in an email to us just so we have the correct titles, we would appreciate that. Oh, did he leave? Okay. Maybe he'll watch the meeting back, but we'll reach out to him.
Mrs. Rule brought up transportation. We are setting up a meeting with transportation. We have been struggling again with the shortage of bus drivers and we need to work on our communication to parents. The issue has been that the dispatcher and the two other administrators that work in transportation are driving buses, but we need to work out some way that they, even if it's leaning on our secretaries in the central office building, to make sure that we're communicating to you all in a timely manner. So I promise you that we're gonna work on that and we had already worked on scheduling a meeting on that, we were just discussing that today.
And just to clarify, that's been a real bone of contention with me and Dr. Therese that we aren't getting the, a lot of these things are happening at the last minute where our people in the office are out and we're not getting the calls from the bus companies that they are gonna be late. So we need to try to find a way to get the information and then get it out.
And then get it out, right. So that we're working on. We need to make sure that we're doing a better job there. But no, there are no kids standing outside of Timber Lane by themselves. As a former principal and vice principal, there is always an administrator standing with those students and going back and forth on a radio or secretary or someone, making sure that the students are there and they're communicating with the transportation department trying to resolve it. So we don't leave kids out there to their own devices. But we're gonna work on getting this information out to you sooner and we would not let kids stand outside in the elements, we bring them inside in those cases. Did I miss anything? Did you want to address the? Yes, the GSA. So the GSA came at the request of many parents and students. We had, we used to, and it's been in place for some time now, we used to have the Spectrum Club at the high school come over and talk to the kids. And it's not a club where they're sharing sexuality or any of that. It's a club where students find allies, people that support them, if there's bullying or just friends and support. It's not something where we talk about, this is what it means to be gay or straight and this is how you go about it. That's not what the club is intended for. They send out the club enrichments for parents, to parents for kids to sign up. I will talk to Ms. Jean Freddie about sending this one home as well. That should be something that's going home with the other enrichments where parents can sign up. And again, she can't share out lists of who's on that because that's the business of that particular kid and their parent. But we can make sure that that's being sent out with the other enrichment, so parents are aware that the club is offered at least, and then you would make the decision to sign your child up. Did I miss anything? Yes, and I spoke to Ms. Klein in an email, we went back and forth. I will follow up with that teacher. The specific question was about instituting a policy, something in policy about it. I don't know if we need to go that far. I think by the time we get through the process of starting a new policy, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be something we won't need. But I do assure you that I'm going to follow up because I was very clear to my teaching staff and all my administrators that these conversations should not be happening. So as promised, I've already been in communication with the principal and I will follow up with the teacher and you as well to find out that that was resolved.
And I would think that in any instance such as that, when you would ask, the parents would directly email you, the building principal, so that we could follow up.
Absolutely.
I think that was most of it, if not all.
Could the board speak to the policy of blocking the violation of our state laws?
Sir, you may not comment from the floor, thank you.
I've been here three times and that's.
Sir, you may not comment from the floor, thank you. If you have further concerns, please email us.
I just want to quickly say, my response was in my slide deck that says we would continue to follow the NJ DOE, the CDC guidelines and our local health department guidelines until we are told that we don't have to. That was the response.
Sir. Public comment? If you have a vote. My computer died. I would like to request a motion to enter into executive session. We will be discussing. Oh, there is, I'm sorry, yes, to discuss. Ma'am, you may not comment from the floor, I'm sorry. We did, oh, the item's for second read, I'm sorry. Yes, he did, you did mention that, he did mention. This is on my, I'm sorry, my computer died and I can't find, what is our other matter? And during executive session, we will also be discussing a potential shared services opportunities with Hopewell Township. No action will be taken during executive session. Request a motion to enter into executive session. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.